All right, the regular meeting of council of the city of Fairview Park for Monday, May 4th, 2020 is now called to order. A moment of silent reflection. Here with the clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Semerly.
Here.
Mr. Minnick.
Here.
Mrs. Adler.
Here.
Mr. Kilbane.
Here.
Mrs. Waring.
Here.
Mrs. King.
Here.
Mr. Berger.
Present.
Okay, the chair will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of council of April 20th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing number of the clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Motion carries, minutes are approved. Okay, we'll now have a committee reports, local government and community services, councilwoman Waring.
Thank you, council president. Local government and community services committee met on Monday, April 25th, beginning at 7:09 PM. In attendance were members of council, the mayor, directors Riley and Costello. The committee discussed one issue, the board of control, which is outlined in the city of Fairview Park's charter, Article 7, Section 4. The issue was brought for discussion due to a concern from council that primarily unelected officials were making some of the largest purchase decisions in the city. The discussion centered around shifting the power from the unelected officials to those who can be held accountable by taxpayers via election without impacting project schedules. Council voted seven to zero to leave the issue in committee pending further investigation. Local government and community services concluded at 7:37 PM.
Thank you, councilwoman. Finance committee, councilwoman King.
Thank you, council president. The finance committee met via video conferencing on April 27th, 2020 at 7:04 PM. In attendance were members of council, Mayor Cooney, Director Riley, Director Single, Director Costello, and members of the community. Ordinance 2012 establishing the establishes the retiree accrued benefit fund. There were no questions or discussions needed as the finance director explained the purpose for establishing this fund previous previously. A motion to place this on second subsequent third read was made and passed with the vote of seven to zero. Ordinance 2013 authorizes a contract with Go@IT for computer services. After after a brief discussion regarding emails, a motion was made to place this on second and subsequent third read, which passed with the vote seven to zero. A motion was made to remove the issue of the 2020 budget and solid waste removal from the committee's agenda, and it passed with the vote of six to one. The finance committee ended at 7:08 PM. This concludes my report.
Thank you, councilwoman King. Okay, we will now begin our legislative agenda for this evening with legislation for first reading. Councilwoman King, if you're ready.
Thank you. I would like to place an ordinance before council for first reading.
The clerk, please assign a number and read the title.
Ordinance 2021, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Services and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance accepting the 2020 Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council Energize Community Grant to provide financial assistance for energy efficiency projects or energy infrastructure improvements and authorizing the city administration to file all documents and execute all agreements necessary to receive any awarded grant funds and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ordinance 2021 is placed on first read and referred to the finance committee. Okay, now legislation for second reading, councilwoman King.
Thank you. I would like to play two place two ordinances before council for second reading.
Will the clerk please read the titles?
Ordinance 2012, requested by Mayor Patrick J. Cooney, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance establishing the retiree accrued benefits fund and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2013, requested by Mayor Patrick Cooney, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with GoToIt Group for professional support services for the city's computer systems and declaring an emergency.
Okay, ordinances 2012 and 2013 are both placed on second and subsequent third reading. Okay. We'll now have audience input on legislation that's up for passage. I don't know, Liz, have you received any emails?
No, I didn't receive anything for this for this meeting now.
Okay, all right. All right, well, we'll go right ahead to legislation up for passage without three readings then. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, council president. I would like to place an ordinance before council for emergency passage.
Would the clerk please assign a number and read the title?
Ordinance 2022, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Development to solicit requests for proposal and the mayor to enter into a contract with the lowest with the most qualified vendor for HVAC services and maintenance as approved by the board of control and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, councilwoman King.
I move that charter provision in Rule 49 requiring that legislation be read at three separate meetings be suspended and that it be placed before council for emergency passage.
So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any is there any discussion? Hearing number of the clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Motion carries. Councilwoman King.
I move that Rule 53 requiring reference to committee be dispensed and ordinance 2022 be placed on final passage.
So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing number of the clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Motion carries. Prior to call for passage of ordinance 2022, is there any further discussion?
Council president.
Councilwoman King.
I would like to make a motion to amend ordinance 2022 as follows. Number one, enter the date of May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2022 in the second whereas clause for the first two-year period. Number two, replace most qualified vendor with lowest responsive and most responsible vendor in section two. And third, add language of upon approval of council for renewals in the second whereas clause and section three.
Thank you, councilwoman, so moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing number, will the clerk please call roll on the motion to amend?
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Motion carries, the ordinance is amended. Prior to call for passage of ordinance 2022 amended, is there any further discussion? Hearing number, hearing number of the clerk, please call roll on passage of ordinance 2022 amended.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Ordinance 2022 amended passes. This will conclude our legislative agenda for this evening. We'll now have reports and communications from the mayor and his directors. Mayor Cooney, if you're ready.
Thank you, council president Kilbane and council. I'd like to say hi to Michael McKay. Hello, Michael, how are you? As I think council is aware, last Friday, we had some temporary layoffs in our building, senior life service and recreation departments. These layoffs were a result of the COVID-19 crisis and the large projected revenue losses that we are anticipating. As has been shared with council late last week. We had a nearly 30% decline in our April 20 income tax advancements for the month of April compared to April 2019. All of the employees who were laid off will continue to receive their medical benefits with the city paying its portion. Some of there's a couple of folks who did not receive medical benefits, that was their election, but those who have elected to receive those benefits prior to you know, in the open enrollment will still receive those. Additionally, all these all the employees will be receiving $600 per week federal benefit during this temporary layoff. We are evaluating our revenue and our operations probably on a daily basis so that we could have these folks join us as soon as possible. The senior life department will continue to will continue to with its weekly meal deliveries and providing their assistance to our seniors. The service department is still, you know, they're still working in our parks and our streets and working on our infrastructure needs. The building department is still working on all permits. People have permits, they could drop them off in the mailbox outside of city hall. And they're continuing to conduct housing inspections. While all the activities of the recreation department are suspended and the Gemini as Gemini Center is closed. We are working on best practices for the return of our programming and and the use of the Gemini Center, and that will continue, you know, until further notice from the from the governor. And again, we're going to be working on trying to get these folks back to us as soon as we can. On Saturday, April 25th, I'd like to, there was a food drive at Fairview High School. I'd like to thank Journey Church, the Cleveland Food Bank, and the Cleveland Hope Exchange for sponsoring that food drive. I would like to thank Dr. Bill Wagner and the Fairview Park City Schools for the use of their facilities. The materials were packed at Journey Church and brought over late Friday so that the the drive could go forward Saturday morning. And it was a very well executed event. There was hundreds of families that received received, you know, fresh produce and some shelf-stable food. And there was a number of volunteers there from Journey Church had as well some of our local residents who participated. There was a lot of positive energy there, a lot of hope there. I'd like to thank the Fairview Park Police Department and the auxiliary unit, auxiliary members from the from our police department for volunteering their time at the event. They handled traffic control and, you know, again, there was no issues with backups or anything of that sort, and I really appreciate them coming in to assist. A number of our employees also helped deliver 90 90 meals, the 90, you know, the the fresh produce, produce and the other food to our seniors. So I'd like to thank those employees for for their time on a Saturday morning and helping helping our seniors. I'd like to announce that we recently received a few grants. One is the we received confirmation of the community development supplemental grant, $50,000 grant that is slated for the Thomas Lane Green Space Project. I'd like to thank Monica Rossiter for her efforts in securing that grant. We intend to go to the Parks and Recreation Commission with our with the plan design and then Planning and Design Commission. And assuming we have approval from those commissions will be coming to council. It's our hope to 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 present to those commissions in the next 30 to 60 days. Earlier to earlier today, we submitted a grant to the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for reimbursement of expenses related to the COVID-19 crisis. I'd like to thank again Monica Rossiter for her efforts in getting that taken care of. That was something we heard about late last week and we that was submitted before the close of business today. I'd like to thank Chief Upperman, Lieutenant Paul Shepard, and Greg Single, our finance director, and assisting Monica in getting the information needed for that. As we hear more information on that grant and other grants relating to reimbursement of expenditures relating to this crisis, we obviously will keep you posted. Earlier today, Director Costello and Planner Rossiter participated in a webinar regarding micro prize enterprise grants fund through funds through the Kyoka County. These funds are related to the CARES Act and they're kind of a combination of community development block grants and some other programs. So it's a little, it's not your normal normal process and accessing these and how to use them. But both Director Costello and Rossiter, Planning Director Rossiter were on that call and are looking at ways that we can use those for our residents and our businesses businesses here in Fairview Park. I'd like to update you all on the Fairview Park Micro Grant Program that you approved a few weeks back. Last Friday, we cut checks to nine local businesses totaling $28,500. The we are in the process of reviewing other applications at this time. And we're hoping to announce additional awards in the next seven to 10 business days. You know, just to give you a little thumbnail sketch of how this works. We contact local businesses about this program. They send in their material that's reviewed by Director Costello and Monica. They score those applications. The building department then reviews those current location, those locations where the businesses are operating to see that that the folks that are applying are have current certificate certificates of occupancy and no outstanding building building issues. And then Finance Director Greg Single, he will confirm with Rita that there are no outstanding tax obligations from these businesses. And then I will review all of that with the various directors and then we make a determination on the awards. And we've had a lot of positive feedback from our local businesses and in in this with regard to this project. You know, for some of these people, even though it may be a small sum of money. You know, due to the nature of what people are dealing with, it's really, it's been very meaningful to them. So I really appreciate your support of this project and this grant program. And we hope to find some additional funds to fund it. You know, that was one of the, you know, things that we've we've approached the county about and as we're hearing of these new programs through this federal relief acts, we're looking to see if there's some possibility to add add to this to this fund. And we'll keep you posted on on those efforts. Speaking of efforts, I would ask that anybody who has not participated in the 2020 census that they do that as soon as possible. And I think people have done that this weekend. I think late last week, our response rate was 68%. And just prior to this meeting today, I looked and we're closer to 76%. So we moved it up a few points and we can move it up to the B plus, A, A minus range, maybe even A, A plus range. So it's very important for for our future, for our for our kids, our schools that people participate in this program. You know, due to the to the challenges that will present the census takers and going door to door. It really, it's in everybody's best interest to to do this online or by phone or by mail as soon as possible. If you have any questions, you can go to 2020census.gov to to look at this and see what you need to do to complete it. If anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to to assist them here at city hall. As I'm sure everybody is aware, Dr. Acton has a continued her stay safe order starting on May 1st. I'd like to thank everyone, all the citizens for their efforts and hard work and taking care of themselves and their neighbors and in keeping all of us safe. We've done a very good job here with our social distancing and our hygiene. And it's important that we continue those efforts even now while businesses are going to reopen and things are going to be expanding. The most critical aspect of all of this is to continue with proper social distancing, wearing of masks and taking care of oneself to limit people's exposure. Because the order is going to allow for additional expansion of businesses. You know, if people see something that is of concern to them, that may seem out of the ordinary. The old adage, if you see something, say something would apply here. I've talked to Chief Upperman, he's aware obviously of the the new order, the new requirements and the new restrictions or you know, different types of restrictions that are in place. I can tell you that I know that the police have been called to a couple of you know, people that some concerns about events or people getting together, the police will respond to investigate those. Sometimes it's just a matter of getting some clarification as to why people are together, it might be family together, there's properly socially proper social distance in place. And sometimes it's just people just being reminded to do that. So if you see something that is of concern, please call the police, they will respond. I did get a chief shared with me today, one of those instances where a family was together and they really appreciated the professionalism and the concern that the officer showed to this family in in addressing another neighbor's concern, so. But again, it's important that we all continue to work together to to keep everybody safe. So I'd like to thank all of you for your support and and these the micro grab program and letting us in pointing out some of the concerns that you have, some of the you know, things going on throughout the city. Please, please keep us informed on any of those concerns and we'll respond to them as quickly as we can. And I hope everybody out there stays safe and healthy and that applies to to all our family members here in fire. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor Cooney. Finance Director Single. Director Single, are you there?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, you there?
I am, yes.
Sorry, I think I was muted. A couple items tonight, thank you. One, monthly reports for April were distributed today. After your review, if any member of council has any questions, please let me know. The mayor did speak earlier tonight regarding the Rita advance that was received last week. The reconciliation will be received right around May 15th. So as soon as we get those numbers, we'll report them to city council. And that concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Director of Public Service and Development, Costello.
Evening, thank you. I'd like to thank city council for a passage of the HVAC preventative maintenance ordinance. I will have that request for proposals issued shortly and we'll look forward to a June Board of Control review of those findings. We also opened bids on Friday and I might be taking some of Mr. McKay's report here, but we are happy to announce to city council that six bids were received with the lowest bid being approximately $73,000 below the engineer's estimate. So we will also be presenting that finding to city council and the Board of Control. Thank you. That includes my report.
Thank you, Director. City Engineer McKay.
Thank you, council president Kilbane. Good evening, everybody, and it's good to see you all. And yeah, my report is pretty short this evening. I'll just reiterate what Mary Kay said and we received those bids, so for the waterline project and we'll have a report for the Board of Control in a couple of days. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, engineer. Okay. Liz, have we have we received any any requests to participate in the public session?
No, I didn't get any. Any emails.
Right, well then we'll just we'll move right over to miscellaneous business and comments by members of council. Councilman Semerly.
Sure, just a couple of things. I just wanted to thank you, Mayor Cooney and your staff. I think you guys have done a great job. I'm sure this wasn't how you pictured your first four months as mayor, but I think you've done a great job for us in the city, so thank you for that. And I also just wanted to thank Walt Maynard and his team too. They helped me with a couple of questions and concerns from residents in our ward over the past couple of weeks. So just wanted to thank him for that as well. And that's all I had tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Semerly.
Councilman Minnick.
Thank you. Mayor, we're going to have several Board of Control meetings from the miscellaneous artists that have been passed. And again, a good job by the administration. Just to the virus. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Minnick.
Councilwoman Adler.
Yeah, echoing the other sentiments as well, Mayor Cooney and your entire staff. In all the calls that I've made, I've got nothing but prompt response to help again, keep the residents here informed. And I appreciate all the the transparency you've shared with all the decisions as well as, you know, the emotional aspect of this is certainly not been an easy one for you, but you've handled it in tip-top shape and, you know, it shows a real compassion for the city, for the the workers, you know, for our city and for the residents and and it shows in all the efforts that you have put forth. And once again, Mary Kay Costello has has come to my assistance in in a prompt fashion to help deal with a resident who had some issues and I always appreciate, you know, when I can get some help from people that are in the know. So thank you again for all your efforts.
Thank you, councilwoman.
Councilwoman Waring.
Thank you, council president. I just wanted to reiterate how proud I am to be part of a city that is responding the way we are to COVID-19, making the shutdowns where we needed to, making really difficult, difficult decisions when we need to. And my heart goes out to all of the employees that have experienced hardship in the past week. And we welcome you back with open arms come the end of this COVID-19. I'm not even sure what the pandemic situation, I at this point, it's just a disaster here for for the majority of us. But we are handling it with grace and, you know, my heart goes out to everybody who has been affected, both city workers and and residents. And I want to thank the administration for doing a great job in trying to And I want to thank the administration for doing a great job in trying to triage as best we can all of our responses.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Waring. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. I just would like to also continue to thank everyone in the, in the administration here. And it's great to be part of this wonderful team. And everyone, please stay safe. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman King.
Councilman Berger.
Nothing, thanks.
Thank you. Law Director Riley, I just realized I skipped your report. Did you have anything to say? I apologize.
No, it's just good to be recognized. Thank you.
I apologize. You know, the format here is a
Right, you could have had something to say.
Well, I would just like to reiterate everything that's been said already that, you know, Mayor Cooney, you've had to make some difficult decisions over the past few weeks. And like I said, you've been, you've kind of been thrown right into the fire here. And it's just, it's something we've, none of us have ever dealt with before. And I know you've done your best and I too, I feel, you know, I feel for any of our employees that are, that are being affected by layoffs or, or, you know, you know, no raises or whatever, whatever, you know, concessions have to be made to get us up through this. So, so it's just a tough time. And I also thank you, Mayor, for getting that, that money out to our, our businesses that needed to stay afloat or pay their employees. You know, I just, I read a New York Times article today with numbers from the, from the Trump administration, actually. While we're opening up, you know, society in different parts of this, of this country right now, I mean, they're predicting these, they're predicting these, the rates of illness, of infection to go up. I mean, I think we're at around 25,000 infections a day right now. They're saying by, this is the administration's medical people saying this, that by June 1st, probably 200,000 infections a day in this country. And probably, right now, we're around 1,200 deaths a day to probably about 3,000 deaths per day. So, you know, as, as, as things are starting, I mean, I know everyone's getting cabin fever and it's been a difficult couple of months. And as things are starting to open back up and, you know, the different, the different waves of businesses opening or whatever, I just, I just want our residents and everyone just keep in mind that, you know, this isn't over and that, you know, it's, it's going to get worse before it gets better. So just be careful and everyone stay safe.
Thank you, Council President Cobain. And I, I agree with you, you know, stay safe. And there's a lot, we have a long way to go and I appreciate the support of everybody here. I know you're dealing with a lot of, tough for everybody. It's a tough situation for everybody. We appreciate your support and your, and your efforts on behalf of everybody here in the city. So thank you. And again, as, as Council President Cobain said, you know, stay safe. We got a long way to go.
We do. Thanks, Mayor. All right, the chair would like to announce that executive sessions were held on April 13th and April 20th to consider compensation of a public employee or official under personnel matters and to prepare for, conduct or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. There being nothing further to come before this council this evening. The chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Would a clerk please call roll?
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Cobain.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cooney, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
Bye, you guys.
Thanks.
Bye.
Bye-bye.